Well, I was trying to figure out how that was going to work.
Four hours just driving back for our presentation.
Zoom has allowed us to do. I was looking forward to in person, but.
Yeah, yeah, well, some of the it's a classic six forty five.
Oh, he's perfectly fine. I was just looking forward to it.
Yes.
Good evening. I'd call it all court order. The planning commission special meeting city of Campbell, California, May thirty first. Madam Clark, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sizer.
Here.
Commissioner Riplin. Commissioner Ostrowski. Commissioner Cray.
Here.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Here.
Vice Chair Bookbinder.
Here.
Chair Ching.
Here.
Thank you. So Development Director, do we have any communications agenda modifications, postponements?
Just some quick announcements. Robbie Stewart, Community Voluntarist Director, we did the agenda that got late. Apologies for that, but we did get it out over the weekend. We did attach some materials. No need to do homework under this, but if you have the opportunity, materials both for the graduate students and undergraduate students were attached. And of course, you can review those after the presentation tonight. Updates except for that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So this is part of the meeting where we'll move to all requests. This is a point on the agenda where members of the public may address the commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the commission. See anybody online? Okay, so with that. I'll close the public hearing and move to our first agenda item tonight, which is a study session PLN dash twenty twenty two dash fifty nine. Study session to receive a presentation by Cal Poly San Luis Obispo on downtown and light rail station vision planning. So that's the one agenda item. So it sounds very exciting. Looking forward to it. Welcome, Maggie. And. Move straight to the presentation.
Yeah, for help, I'll lead off again. Robbie Stewart, Community Voluntarist Director, a few introductory words, introductions, and then the bulk of the presentation tonight is going to be led by the Cal Poly students. So quick introduction with me, Stephen Rose, Senior Planner, who's been assisting this effort. We do have online and ready to present. They are presenting remotely tonight. The the students for both a graduate program and an undergraduate program at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And so just a bit of pretext. A lot of this goes back to Campbell's housing moment, which the commission is familiar with, and our focus on concentrating new housing types and densities in Campbell to meet our housing needs. And if the commission will remember, a lot of those places for new housing were located in and around our downtown and in around the Winchester Light Rail Station under the concepts and principles of transit oriented development. We reached out to Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. They have a track record in their program of going out to communities, doing community engagement and doing sort of concept vision planning, where they can just come in, bring some great fresh new ideas on looking at cities and proposing new concepts that cities can consider on urban design plans, stationary plans, different different plans in cities. And on a personal note, I had used them previously when I was at the county Santa Clara. They did great work for us on the community of San Martin. And so with our focus on housing in certain parts of the city and running the city didn't have specific word called stationary area plans, really plans that focused how development happens around light rail stations. We invited the Cal Poly students to to use their design studio to come up to Campbell and look at our community and give us some nice new, fresh, interesting ideas on how that would all develop. So with that, we started working with the professors back in, oh, I'm trying to remember, probably right on the start of the new year, and they put it into the curriculum. A little bit on background, they did a nice visit up here back in, I'm trying to remember now, I think it's March timeframe, April, sorry. And came up and we had a presentation by members of the Chamber of Congress and our store preservation board in VTA, and we took them on a little bit of a whirlwind tour around other stations in the area up to Burlingame and Sunnyvale, and then down to Santana Row for some urban design concepts. And with all that, they went back and looking firstly under their schedule, which is a quarter system, not a semester system, which is ten weeks, and have been putting together some proposals, ideas and visions for the two areas. So with that, the structure for tonight, we're going to start with the grad students. And they focused on the downtown area of Campbell and have some design concepts on looking at new ideas, urban design, economic development, vision plan around downtown. That will be the first presentation. The thought is that will go about thirty to forty minutes, stop, and any questions from commissioners to the grad students, they can answer those. Then roughly at seven o'clock, and that is a little bit of a hard start because some of the undergrad students are still in class until six forty five. At seven o'clock, the schedule was to have the graduate, the undergraduate students present their design concepts around the Winchester Light Rail Station. Again, that should run about thirty, forty minutes and then time for questions. So that's the proposed structure for tonight. Again, the the form of noticing and the the action before you is just to receive the report. Again, this isn't a general plan. It's not zoning ordinance. It's not a formal plan. These are ideas and concepts coming from future planners that are in the graduate undergraduate program at Cal Poly and for Campbell to consider going forward. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Professor Hemma. I see her online. I think she's ready. And she's the professor of the graduate program, and I think with that she will introduce the students and away they will go. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Rob. Chair Chang and members of the planning commission, thank you for your time. It's a real pleasure to be had to have this time to present to you the findings and the design ideas that fifteen graduate students are only in their first year of a master's program have been able to develop partly thanks to this wonderful trip that Rob and his staff arranged for us early in the game. We came away totally charmed with the historic nature and quality of your downtown. And I think it gave us a vigor to think about what could happen in the next fifty years that would preserve those qualities and yet allow for the development that we know is pressing around you. I'm Hemalata Dandekar. I had the privilege of being the instructor for this course. Those ten weeks that Rob mentioned have gone very fast. You have before you draft preliminary report. It will contain all the details that the students obviously cannot dwell on in their presentation to you today. They will, though, concentrate on the highlights of the design visions they've had. I can assure you that they have looked carefully at the data, carefully at the documents of the city and built their visions along the lines that you've been thinking about. We want to thank Rob and his staff because they've come in at least three, four times to give us critical feedback so that we knew that we were doing what the city actually had anticipated or my desire. So thank you, Rob, for this opportunity and also for giving all of your staff, giving us good guidance over these last few weeks. We we are really focused on looking to the future. Covid has really wrecked havoc. Actually, we thought we were home free. We had the opportunity to interact well in our studios until today. Today, we've gone to a masking order and particularly the undergrad group has been hit quite hard by this. So I hope you will bear with any glitches we might have in the delivery. We look forward to your comments and find it and feedback on our findings. And with that, I will pass this on to Alex and Marina, who will take up this challenge of telling you what they think fifty years from now Campbell might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor, and good evening, Planning Commission. We're very excited to show what you've been working on, but give me one second. I'll get us started here. All right, I'm gonna hand off to Marina to get us started.
All right. Thanks, Alex. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Marina. We first want to thank you for inviting us to present our vision plan for downtown Campbell this evening. We are so excited to share our ideas for enhancing downtown and surrounding areas with you tonight. So in our presentation, we'll cover a brief overview of our planning timeline. We'll share our main takeaways from the initial research we did on the city of Campbell. But for the most part, we'll focus on the fun stuff, which is the design plans that we've created for three distinct planning zones, which we've called the civic commons branching out of downtown and the orchard. We'll finish with a quick recap of what we discussed and then leave time for your questions and feedback, which will incorporate into our final report that we'll be sending to the city next week. So just to give you all some context of what we've been working on for the past ten weeks, we have our timeline here. The first five weeks were really spent getting to know the city of Campbell through secondary source research. We also developed and distributed a survey to the community and to stakeholders. We took a field trip to Campbell where we conducted a site survey and a SWOT analysis of what we saw. And we took all of what we learned in the first several weeks of our class to create a plan that we thought represented the values and the needs of the city of Campbell, and we hope you agree with us. And that's what we'll be sharing with you today. So with that, I'm going to pass it back to Alex, who will share the takeaways from our initial research on Campbell.
Thank you, Marina. So ten short weeks ago, we started the process by researching existing documents and resources relevant to the project area. This included things such as news articles, official city reports and plans, and the US Census. End of review of these resources allowed us to identify key opportunity areas within the city of Campbell that really helps set the initial trajectory of the planning visioning process. Initially, these areas included connectivity in downtown as it related to transportation and circulation, housing and in particular housing affordability, and a historic downtown focus and historic preservation. In addition, we assess design plans and guidelines related to East Campbell branding and Campbell's historic character, place making in the form of public art, and the park play program, which many merchants and residents seem to be very excited about. After we finished our preliminary research, we were lucky enough to go on a field trip to the city of Campbell and experience downtown firsthand. Armed with our clipboards, maps and pens, we split the planning area into five sections shown on the right here in the map, and then survey those areas in small teams of three to four. Based on what we observed, we did individual SWOT analyses for each area and then identified the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats present in each. After that, we compiled key points from each individual slot into one holistic and integrated slot of the entire downtown region. We found the focal strengths to be the VTA station and its ability to be an entrance point to the downtown for visitors of Campbell and residents residents of Campbell. In addition, we found the local businesses and historic buildings to be a good anchor point of the downtown region. The weaknesses, however, were the lack of cover canopy in certain areas and the car range in nature of much of the region, especially along the corridors highlighted in red on the map that made the area feel a little uncomfortable and a little unwelcome for pedestrians and cyclists. We saw opportunities to hide the local character and celebrate Campbell's small town charm, as well as improve active transportation infrastructure and make the area a little more welcoming and friendly for cyclists. The threat that we took into consideration as we started developing planning solutions were the high land value of the area, especially as related to affordable housing and new developments, and the loss of small town character, which again we know is so important to the city of Campbell. Intended with the research and side analysis, we engaged the Campbell community through the use of online surveys and phone interviews. We ended up connecting with sixty community stakeholders, local businesses and residents. And while the surveys targeted the greater Campbell community, our interviews included sixteen businesses and six local government entities. This really gave us a better idea of what the Campbell community felt about, you know, related to the downtown, their opinions and their perceptions of the general region. We found that residents generally liked the small town feel and small town charm of downtown Campbell, the sense of community that existed in the region and the walkability of the area, especially on days of events such as the farmers market. The dislikes, however, were the like of pedestrian and cyclist safety, parking and a lack of a cohesive urban design path throughout the Campbell transect. After compiling and analyzing all of the feedback, forming ideas for improvement emerged. These are ideas we really took into consideration in the heart and really tried to incorporate into the designs you hear about very shortly. These ideas include improving pedestrian crossings and making them safer for pedestrians, enhancing their resign continuity across the entire Campbell corridors, making some areas of the street cut off to vehicle travel and making them pedestrian only, and finally, improving cycling infrastructure and making it again an area that's a little more well suited for bikers and making the area a little more multi-modal. And so everything I've discussed here is just a snapshot of the research you've done, but our final report and findings will be made to the planning commission and the planning staff next week. So if you're taking into consideration everything we had learned and everything we discovered, we decided to split the planning area into three distinct sections to better hone in on the opportunities and issues that we saw present within the downtown region. These areas include the civic commons, which is highlighted in blue. This includes many of the core downtown parcels, as well as the civic center in the north and the VTA station in the south. Branching out of downtown, which is highlighted in pink, this contains some of the western downtown core parcels, as well as the left or the western and eastern gateways heading into downtown Campbell. Finally, we have the orchard highlighted in green, which contains many of the older industrial and business commercial parcels and Campbell Park. And I'm going to pass it off to Hannah to tell us a little more about the civic commons.
Hello. So thank you all for coming tonight. I'm really excited to start our group off with a proposal that we have for the new downtown core, and we are calling this section the civic commons. So perhaps a radical approach to our interpretation of survey respondents' desire to have more pedestrian oriented streets. We're proposing that the civic commons will be an entirely pedestrianized area. So just a brief walkthrough of the side map shown. So starting from the VTA station to the south, transit riders will exit to an open plaza space comprised of this existing section of Orchard City Drive and the parking lot of the Canary Building. The existing Canary Building is proposed to be a public market that will serve both visitors and residents alike. So as you move through the plaza space, the initial blocks will be mixed use buildings with retail and restaurants utilizing the public or the plaza space to create an active center. I will now take you through this section of Central Ave and East Campbell, which will be a continuation of the plaza, again, with plenty of retail and restaurants utilizing this space. We envision a really active plaza space with street furniture, trees, greenery, and plenty of shading to provide a vibrant new central axis of downtown Campbell that will lead to our reimagined civic center to the north of this area. So now I'd like to focus on our design for the southern half of our area, which really focuses on the VTA station connection. So the southern portion of the civic commons will serve as the access from the VTA station to the rest of the downtown, including the new civic center. The integration was of high importance when we were first given this project, so we really wanted to create a unique design that accomplished this goal. We also want to create the space to be an arrival point for light rail users with lively retail and restaurant spaces throughout. History was also of high importance with this project. So as you can see on the map, the pink reddish buildings are historic structures of merit, which are the Farmers Union Building, the bank building along Campbell Avenue and the Schrader Building. And we also want to propose a historical representation of Campbell through an art sculpture and public art in the Orchard City Plaza. Finally, we wanted this area to be a really livable space with buildings one, two, three, and four on this map, all being mixed use buildings with private courtyards and alleyway access points to Central Avenue. We envision these buildings to be one story of retail and up to three stories of housing to densify the area while still maintaining character. Now I want to explain a bit of our ideas for the public art for the site. So specifically regarding the integration of VTA to downtown, we would like to use public art to liven up the space. Inspiration for this portion of our project is from one of our case studies, which looks at a transit station public art piece in Scotland. So you can see the before and after photos on the left show how much livelier and more welcoming the spaces now that it has this really fun and colorful mural. And on the right, we have an example of our proposed phase one pedestrianization of the space through the use of a painted mural, which we hope would have a similar effect on the space as the transit station mural in Scotland. As seen on the previous site map, we want to integrate a sculpture into the Orchard City Public Plaza as well. So through this proposed sculpture, we would like to showcase Campbell's history of its fruit industry, as well as the many groups of people that have lived in the Campbell area over time. So that includes native groups, workers from the fruit industry and other blue collar workers, and those who call Campbell their home today. We really envision that these sculptures seen in these photos would be inspiration for the focal point sculpture in the proposed plaza. The Canary Building would also be rebranded. So here are some case studies that we explored for inspiration for this public market. We really liked Pond City Market as it provides patrons with plaza and green space for relaxation and socialization. Grand Central Market in LA was inspiration to provide a grocer for residents in nearby neighborhoods, which we found to be a really important need from the survey that we conducted, as well as for a unique experience for those that travel to this destination. Finally, we went abroad to Florence at the Mercato Centrale. This was from the personal experience of one of my groupmates who really enjoyed coming to relax, drink wine and read a book before heading to her next destination when she was living abroad. Here is our proposed model for the VTA station, VTA station connection to Orchard City Plaza going towards the west. So active transportation in this area is really important. As you can see, we have a dedicated bike lane and plenty of safe pedestrian only walking space. We've also provided shading and various street furniture for pedestrians to utilize while enjoying the space. Keeping the Canary Building as is on the outside provides the same view of the water tower, which is an important focal point for downtown Campbell that we really want to maintain. The public market connection to the plaza is really strong, and as you can see, the proposed sculpture that I talked about earlier is shown through the yellow block to the right, but obviously we'd want to make it something more fun than just a yellow block. We'd want to make it something like the strawberries or the other sculptures I showed before. There will also be plenty of nearby green spaces nearby to complement the plaza. This view from our model shows how we designed the adaptive reuse of the bank and trader building along East Campbell Avenue as preserving history is really important while moving into the future. In the space, there's plenty of pedestrian space, including restaurant areas that open into the plaza. Finally, we included mixed use buildings with housing throughout our model, as you can see here. And now, as we move through Central Ave to the northern section of our site, which includes the recreation of the civic center plaza, which will be talked about more in detail by my groupmate.
Thank you, Hannah, for presenting the southern half of the civic commons planning area. My name is Abdul Albi presenting the northern half of the civic commons planning area, and this really involves three main components. The redesigned civic center that'll promote interaction and activity among the visitors, but it will be filled with public amenities as well. The second main component will be the Central Avenue Promenade. This will be between Civic Center Drive and East Campbell Avenue on Central Avenue. And this will help create an enhanced pedestrian experience. And the third main component will be the East Campbell Avenue corridor with the Angstley Park expansion. The focus is on adaptive reuse of the existing historic buildings located on East Campbell Avenue and also creating the streets creating East Campbell Avenue to be friendly towards bike travel and walking. Okay. The first, you know, main component is obviously the civic center, which will be redesigned. We understand the library is currently being remodeled in the future, and in the future, hopefully, the civic center will undergo a redesign change as well. Our concept plan envisioned the civic center area to be the main attraction in downtown Campbell. The redesigned civic center will have the following key key design elements. Pathways that will establish connections to the various nodes and buildings, plaza space that will promote public gathering, an active play area that will have parents bring their children to enjoy the civic center space and green space activation, converting these existing concrete asphalt areas currently that currently exist in civic center into more green spaces, gardens, landscape installations. Into more green spaces, uh gardens, landscape installations. The second main component will be the Central Avenue Promenade. Uh, this Central Avenue Promenade is between Civic Center Drive and East Campbell Avenue located on Central Avenue. Uh, the promenade will be with most of no curves and no car travel strictly just for pedestrian only. The key design elements we're proposing include shading structures like pergolas. A gateway uh like an archway design notifying residents that they're located in Central Avenue Promenade. And also landscape installations, uh you know, uh plants, gardens. And an open space where visitors can enjoy their foods and after visiting their local downtown Campbell restaurant and shops. As you can see, uh, the diagram labeled one is the Central Avenue Promenade as the gateway design. And also has open space and street furnishing like open seating. And shading. Just to emphasize the key design elements for Central Avenue Promenade. Open seating in public and aesthetically pleasing gateway design. Shade structures that will address urban heat, no cars, only pedestrian bike travel. The third main component will be the East Campbell Avenue Corridor. And this places a focus on historic adaptive reuse. We are proposing not to eliminate these historic structures located on East Campbell Avenue, instead elevate them. Uh, we're proposing to have two to three floors on top of these historic buildings. Uh, they'll comprise of office or residential space and we're trying to preserve that small town and historic character. These floors will address housing needs that will occur in the future. East Campbell Avenue will be the pedestrian, will only be for pedestrian and bike travel only. Uh, the specific, but there will also be specific loading times for businesses on East Campbell Avenue. And lastly, the Ainsley Park Expansion, we're proposing to convert the existing concrete parking lot. Uh, into a plaza spaceman for interaction and relaxation. As you can see, the diagram labeled one is the bird's eye view of the mixed use corridor. Uh, the first floor is obviously uh to preserve the historic buildings. The remaining two floors, the second and third floor are for office space slash or for residential as well. And the uh the diagram label this three is the Ainsley Park Plaza Expansion. Uh, converting that existing concrete area to a plaza space near Ainsley Park. Now, we did do a fly through model. I'll be showing that to you guys right now. Just play the video. So right now, this is the civic commons uh fly through model. We're looking at the mixed use corridor, Central Avenue Promenade space. As you can see, there's um. Street furnishing, a gateway design, landscape installation. And this is the gateway design near the civic center. Also, there's some creative art pieces in this accent street pavement. Now we're going to zoom out. We're going to go to the VTA connector. Now this involves this views from Campbell Avenue to Central. On towards Orca City Plaza. And this also shows the mixed use element as well, as you can see. Two to three floors meant for residential. The VTA Station Connection will uh Orca City Drive will involve a pedestrian only street. The sculpture represented in the yellow block will be the uh. Will be the art installation that we're trying to propose will be more creative than just the yellow block. Also, we'll be showcasing the water tower as well. This concludes the first planning area of our vision plan. I am going to hand this presentation off to Sean, who will present the second planning area of our vision plan for downtown. Thank you.
Hello, Planning Commission. My name is Sean. I'm going to be discussing the branching out of the downtown area. This builds off the civic commons area that you just heard Hannah and Abdul discuss. Uh, the area of focus is that area in pink you could see on the screen there. It extends west from near the community center all the way over to the prune yard along East Campbell Avenue. This connect to the, this connects the larger area to the civic commons, Campbell Park and the Los Gatos, Los Gatos Creek Trail System. A quick overview for our section, going to start up with some vision and goals that we identified. Some case studies that we thought were particularly helpful and then what we learned from those case studies as uh helpful for creating some design elements. We would then like to propose some design elements that we thought were particularly helpful. Our development plan that we identified as the the main components and then our implementation timeline. With our vision, we really want to provide a safe environment that is comfortable and appealing for all people. This includes visitors and the residents of Campbell. We propose doing this through divics diverse mixed uses that celebrate uh Campbell's small town feel. With that vision, we identified three goals that we felt really helped bring that forward. We started off with extending outwards from that civic commons area, highlighting the look and feel of what makes uh historic Campbell so excellent. We also uh in our second goal, wanted to create new spaces for people entering Campbell through gateways. This includes new pedestrian spaces and cyclist spaces. The last goal of ours is the fact that this is a long term implementation. This is going to happen after some of the other groups that uh both the civic commons and the orchard that you'll hear next. And it's in three phased parts. Case studies that we identified uh were helpful in the creation of our design elements. Some of the things that we learned from our case studies included road diets and circulation, green canopy and outdoor space. Transit oriented development, multimodal paths and downtown greenways. We identified two main design elements from all our case studies. That included improving pedestrian spaces, making them, making them safe and attractive for all users. And creating mixed use developments that are people oriented. Starting off with our pedestrian space design element, we really want to create a space that is safe. This means additional street crossings where needed and improving existing street crossings to make them safer and more attractive. Additionally, we would include uh making the area more lit with safety ballers at the edge of pedestrian spaces. And a uniform lamp spacing design to create light along those pedestrian spaces. We also would like to make uh a space attractive and green by adding pergolas with vine plants to provide shade. While trees that we plant uh grow and provide those shade in the future. Lastly, there's a multimodal path element of this, which creates a main bike path with a separated path for pedestrians. The second design element we identified was creating a people friendly mixed use area. In order to ensure that this is people friendly, we've identified the fact that we would like to propose twenty foot setbacks every two floors. And then we would like it to match the historic downtown design Campbell already has. This mixed use would be a combination of office and commercial on lower floors with residential on upper floors. I also like to highlight the fact that we've identified a hotel area that could really help. Bring liveliness to the uh civic commons area and that downtown core. In our development plan, we've identified three main components. And I'm also going to touch on some new zoning and circulation. In our components, the first one is our greenway where we connect the region with a green corridor. The second area is some crosswalk improvements, both upgrading existing crosswalks and improving uh or adding additional crossings. Lastly, we have our people oriented addition, this additions and this includes public space, new developments and that hotel. That would be separate from the other hotels along East Campbell Avenue. Starting out with our zoning updates, this expands a little bit outside of the space, but it gives you a general sense of where we're starting from. In the hatched purple area, you can see our proposed mixed use. In green, you can see our proposed uh open space area. In pink, we have identified areas we think would be great for parking structures. In blue, you can see our public facilities. The north end, you have the civic center in the library and the south you have that public market. In yellow, you can see a residential area and that hotel identified in orange. In terms of circulation updates, there are three main components of it. In that orange yellow on the screen, you can see our proposed pedestrian space. Cutting through that pedestrian space, you can see our separated green bike path. This connects to the Los Gatos Creek Trail. And in red, you can see our our proposed automobile space. In terms of our three main components, starting off with the greenway. This greenway would be a multimodal path that is that has pedestrian and bike separated areas. We've tree lined and covered and would be part of a right of way. This will connect to Campbell Park and the Los Gatos Creek Trail system. And we propose alongside it would be six story mixed use. This would be a combination of office, residential and commercial with those step backs. For crosswalk updates, we have two main parts of it. The first part is the overhaul and redesign of Railway Ave crossing East Campbell Avenue. This is the main intersection in downtown Campbell and it's really important that we improve pedestrian crossings and cycling crossings. Additionally, we would like to propose increasing the number of crosswalks that crossed East Campbell Avenue. Spacing them no more than four hundred feet apart. This would uh, this would also include raising and repaving pedestrian crosswalks to improve pedestrian circulation and safety. Lastly, we have our people oriented additions. This includes continuing that greenway on the west side of downtown. The bike path and multimodal path would split at uh that. Where the loop goes down and would uh extend along Orchard City Drive and continue through on East Campbell Avenue. Additionally, we propose a public garden plaza that would connect the Orchard City Drive to East Campbell Avenue. This new plaza would support are the new developments in the downtown area and the existing businesses. Additionally, we want to highlight a parklet redesign guideline. That would be rolled out within the next five years and that hotel, which is kitty corner from the civic center. That would attract a different audience than the hotels that are in other sections of East Campbell Avenue. Lastly, I'm going to quickly discuss our implementation timeline. This is broken into three parts. We have our five year, our fifteen year and our thirty year part. In the five year, we're really creating that core, the foundation that the rest of our implementation will be built off of. This includes zoning changes and circulation changes. Creating that pedestrian plaza that supports the new downtown businesses, creating that separated bike path. Planting those trees that will hopefully be fully grown in thirty years. And uh adding pergolas that add shade in the meantime. In our fifteen year, we see building off that foundation and adding more visual changes. We would fully reroute automobiles at this point. How finish construction on those parking garages and increase densities. We'd also create that bike, make that bike path a fully painted bike path. In our thirty year goal, we see finishing up this plan. This means fully implementing that multimodal path improvement with a lane separated multimodal path. Complete the intersection redesign and crosswalk redesign. Reduce the pergolas as those trees grow in and add shade to the area. And lastly, fully develop that pedestrian sidewalk space. Next, I'm going to pass it over to Marina, who's going to share the orchard section.
All right. Thank you, Sean. So I'll be presenting the final planning zone of our project today, which is the orchard. Uh, and so we see the orchard as a place for innovation, opportunity and new beginnings. The orchard includes business diversity, affordable housing, pedestrian friendly corridors, outdoor spaces and public art. All of which are intended to make the city of Campbell an attractive place for businesses, families and individuals to put their roots down and grow. So here's a map of the orchard planning area. As you can see, the orchard is anchored by several popular destinations. Which makes it a great place for new development. So to the east, we have downtown Campbell and the VTA state, or sorry, to the west, we have downtown Campbell and the VTA station. And to the east, we have the prune yard, Campbell Park and Los Gatos Creek Trail. And we think that the orchard holds amazing potential to seamlessly bridge the existing gap between all of these community assets. With by activating the space with new opportunities and amenities. In this visual, you can see the three key components of the orchard. So first up. Uh, at top in pink, we have the innovation hub, but this is right along East Campbell Avenue and Railway Avenue. Right next to that in blue, we have the park side frontage, which is between Gilman Avenue and Campbell Park. And then towards the bottom end of the orchard and yellow is our proposed housing for the area. And the first component that I'll cover for the orchard is the innovation hub. Um, so here in pink is the area that we're referring to as the innovation hub. And for this space, we aim to transform and activate what is currently an underutilized space into a thriving. Mixed use hub for economic, commercial and community activity. And there's a few ways that we plan on doing this. The first is through mixed use space. So we've designed the innovation hub to have diverse activities like office, manufacturing and production space to. Serve the needs of startups, business incubators and established businesses. We also envision a variety of small scale commercial businesses filling the space. Like coffee shops, breweries, restaurants and gyms to serve the people that live and work in the orchard. And the reason that we want to have a variety of uses within the innovation hub is because we want the community to see this space as more than just a place where people go to work. But also as a fun and lively place to spend time. Uh, so in addition to the mix of uses, the innovation hub is designed around pedestrian comfort. Uh, through a few different design elements, those being human scaled buildings, first floor commercial space with permeable building frontages. Unique street displays and signage, outdoor seating, street trees, public art and cobblestone pavement. And so building on the topic of walkability, there will be two pedestrian corridors running through the innovation hub. The first one we're calling the Orchard Path, which you can see in the graphic on this slide. Um, the the Orchard Path will bisect existing blocks to welcome foot traffic from downtown Campbell. The VTA Station into the Innovation Hub through it and out towards Campbell Park and Los Gatos Creek Trail. So we think that the orchard uh would benefit from having public art created by local artists. Uh, and be lined with plum trees to celebrate Campbell's agricultural beginnings and provide some some lovely green space. The second pedestrian corridor is the Dillon Avenue Corridor. Where we're pers- uh proposing to transform what is now a two way street into a pedestrian corridor. That has service vehicle access at specific times. And this pedestrian corridor will have a cobblestone path similar to the photos that you see here. It'll also have movable seating so people can take up space at appropriate times while still allowing for. Space for service vehicles to get through to our local businesses. Um, and it'll also have architectural details on the buildings facing the street to beautify the space. And finally, the flow of vehicle traffic will be funneled into Sam Cava Lane and Gilman Avenue. Uh, similar to the graphic you see here, it'll be a complete street with thoughtful landscaping. Uh, features like these photos to enhance pedestrian and cyclist safety and comfort as they travel through the orchard. So that was the innovation hub. The second focus of the orchard is the park side frontage. And when I talk about the park side frontage, I'm referring to this area shaded in blue on the graphic you see on the slide. Um, you can see the existing conditions of this park side frontage in the photos here. You see a beautiful grassy lawn and a really nice paved trail. Completely cut off from the neighboring parcels by a dark fence. Um, which makes complete sense for the industrial uses that are there now. Uh, but we see a lot of potential for this space to be activated. Uh, along the park and to just bring more people into this area through the addition of a community plaza at the northern end of the park side frontage. As well as outdoor seating and uh amenities that celebrate the Los Gatos Creek Trail. Um, so aspects of the park side frontage include a community plaza at the northern end. Uh, this plaza will act as an activity node and a focal point between the orchard and Campbell Park. To create a seamless transition between the built environment and the surrounding open space. And more broadly, the community plaza is actually a terminal access point along a larger connectivity corridor that links the downtown core. The VTA Station and the orchard with Campbell Park and Los Gatos Creek Trail. And we envision this plaza looking similar to these photos here with plenty of outdoor seating. Public art and landscaping elements to make it a really great place for people to hang out, to gather in community and to host public events. Uh, the next design element of the park side frontage is a really simple one. Um, it's simply adding outdoor seating in between all of the buildings on Gilman Avenue and Campbell Park. So we see the space uh transitioning. So we see the space, uh, transitioning from the industrial uses that it is now to things like cafes, breweries and restaurants with outdoor patio, patio seating in the back facing the open space. And we think this could not only create an enjoyable and attractive dining experience, but also, uh, increase appreciation and awareness of Campbell Park and the Los Gatos Creek Trail. And building on that appreciation and awareness of Los Gatos Creek Trail. Uh, in the park side frontage, we also want to add a new public access point to Los Gatos Creek Trail to make it easier for the public to take advantage of. We'd also like to add riparian themed art installations to, um, draw attention to the native plants and animals that rely on a healthy Los Gatos Creek. And finally, we'd like to add wayfinding and interpretive signage at strategic locations to again, increase awareness and appreciation of the beautiful Los Gatos Creek and its surrounding trail. Um, and the final key component of the orchard is high density housing. Uh, so we see great potential to add affordable, high density housing to the orchard. Uh, in particular, we're really excited by the potential to leverage two city owned lots for this purpose. Um, so the city owned lots, um, I'm pointing to it with my mouse. Hopefully you can see it. But we have the, what's currently the first street parking lot right here. And then over here along Los Gatos Creek is a city maintenance yard. And then in between, we see potential to add additional high density housing in between those two city owned lots in the future. And you can see in this visual that although we're proposing high density housing, the building heights we're proposing only range from three to five stories. And actually fit in quite well with the existing building heights in this area. Um, and just, uh, just again with this visual, we have the city owned lots. Uh, we're calling the self first street housing and then what we're calling the creek side housing over here. And then the railway avenue housing is in between those two city owned lots. So in total, we see opportunity to add around three hundred and sixty six units ranging from studios to four bedrooms. And the high density housing that we propose is affordable by design. Uh, we think that adding affordable high density housing to this area will provide more options for individuals and families looking to make the city of Campbell their home. It'll also provide much needed workforce housing for people working in downtown Campbell, the prune yard and eventually the innovation hub. And we highly encourage a partnership with a nonprofit to develop and prioritize a hundred percent affordable housing in these two city owned lots. And we know that the word high density can feel really scary, especially for a city with such a strong small town character. Um, so this in mind to, with this in mind to create the perception of smaller buildings for those looking at them from the street. We recommend the use of setbacks and step backs to help maintain a human scale. Uh, while still maximizing the space with three to five story buildings. And finally, we also want to prioritize thoughtful architecture to fit in with the existing community fabric. So the photo on the left we have here is actually existing high density housing in the city of Campbell that we think does a really great job of maintaining small town charm through the use of lovely brick facades, balconies and front porches. And we want to incorporate similar design elements like porches, stoops, balconies and outdoor space into the proposed housing to contribute to the small town aesthetic as we add more housing types. And that concludes our plan for the orchard. I'm going to pass it back to Sean for a quick recap of our presentation.
Planning Commission, we've thrown a lot at you for the last thirty minutes. I'm going to quickly go over all three sections, the circulation and zoning, just to refresh your memory quickly. Starting off with the civic commons, they focused on pedestrianization throughout this plaza, connecting the VTA station to the civic center, creating what's known as the civic commons plaza. In that area I discussed, we looked at mixed use developments. This multimodal path stretching along East Campbell Avenue and the fact that it's a longer term plan. In the orchard section, they discussed the innovation hub. That park side frontage and the high density affordable housing done in a way that preserves the character of East Campbell. Our zoning map for the entire area, we start off with that mixed used hatched purple. In the pink, you can see our proposed parking structures. Green is that open space. The public facilities is in blue, including the library, the civic center and our proposed, uh, public market. In yellow, you can see the residential and in orange, there is the hotel. For our circulation map of the entire area, you can see that pedestrian space highlighted in yellow. Through it, we have our bike lanes that connect to the Los Gatos Creek Trail. In, in bright red, you can see our main car lanes. And in darker red, you can see our proposed auxiliary car air, uh, space. We're currently working on our draft report. We'll finalize it and get it to you guys within the next week. We want to thank the planning commission, all the planning staff and the city for this incredible opportunity. At this point, I'm going to turn the computer around and, uh, if you have any comments and questions, now is a perfect time to ask them. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, this was, thank you very much. Um, outstanding presentation. That was extremely professional. Um, so a lot, a lot of us to, a lot for us to, uh, think about, um. Rob, Stephen, you've got some real competition, um, coming up, I'm very glad to say. So though I, I thought it was outstanding. What I plan to do is, um, I'll, uh, invite each of my fellow commissioners here to, um, uh, pass comment, ask some questions. If that's okay with you guys. Um, and we can take it from there. So since my crooked neck is looking to the right. I'll, I'll start with commissioners.
I have to. Okay, fir- first of all, I'd just like to, uh, uh, also reiterate, uh, a great presentation. Was this, by the way, I didn't, this was not in my packet, the downtown part. Did I like, open up the wrong agenda?
Robbie's true community. So if you looked at it midday yesterday, wouldn't have seen it, but it's just been uploaded.
Anyway, I, I did get a good understanding of it, watched the presentation, which, um, I appreciate very much. It's very com- complete. Um. You know, I, I certainly like, uh, many of the element, there are certain elements in the, in it that, uh, I, I find appealing. Uh, that, uh, I, I, I like whether it's, it's, um, adding murals and public art sculptures. Um, even some pedestrian only streets selectively. Um, I, I like the idea of the, uh, uh, I'm not sure, I can't remember what you call it, the hub that's over by, by the park area. A certain elements of that where we have presently a light industrial commercial on, on Gilman. Uh, uh, I, I would envision that being a nice opportunity someday to, um, uh, uh, reinvent that area next to the park. As well as the, the, the creek, the creek trail improvements, the park side frontage. Those are all appealing to me. Um, the biggest thing that strikes me of course is it's like the reinventing of downtown. Uh, it's like we're, we're, we're gonna like wipe this like clean and put it into downtown in some ways. Um. Uh, when a, to me, one of the charming things about downtown is a mix of buildings, small, tall, not too tall and short and, and some the old, not particularly pretty, but, um, uh, quaint. Uh, and that's what I think find, makes it, um, attractive to, uh, uh, build out Campbell Avenue, downtown Campbell Avenue with all three and five story mixed use. Um, it's not particularly appealing to me if you were to do it. And we have some of that already, but, uh, and we could use some more, but but building it out completely would be something that I, I wouldn't think would be appealing to Campbell residents. Um, the other thing is, is, is the, um, closing off of the downtown. I mean, it is a rat, to me, it's a radical thing to basically you've, um, uh, closed off Campbell Avenue from Winchester to the east side. And made it pedestrian only, including the, um, the, the, um, the bypass streets. Uh, so there is no way to get from Winchester and Campbell to the east side directly by car, you would have to reroute yourself through, um, neighbor neighborhoods is if I looked at that map correctly, that you, one of the last things you put up with the red uh, traffic mode and, and that based to my knowledge, understanding of the downtown, since I live in the downtown area and have for some time is, um, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a very radical kind of, um, thing that I, I'm not sure makes sense. Uh, Campbell Avenue is, is a corridor. Um, not, not as big a corridor as Hamilton Avenue. Not as big a corridor as Winchester, but it is still a corridor from east to west, west to east. And, uh, the idea of making that all pedestrian only, including the bypasses would be, uh, um, it, 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 it just jumps out at me as something that uh, the comment going, uh, down Lattimer or, or some of the other side streets to get to the other side. Um, seems an impossibility and, and it would cause traffic issues associated with, uh, the really nice downtown neighborhoods. So I would, I would be having a problem with that. I, I, I do like the idea of having some, possibly some of the side streets become pedestrian only, some, some, some promenade somewhere. Uh, making the central avenue, uh, a promenade all the way through basically cuts off the downtown in half. So, um, those are my comments. It was a great presentation. Um. Uh, I appreciate how much work that must have been to put into that. I have a son who, who did urban planning masters program. And so, uh, I, I have an appreciation for, for that, uh, and he, he loved doing that. So, um, I, I want to congratulate you on your effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Uh, so hi everybody. I'm Maggie Ostrowski. Thank you so much for a wonderful presentation. First, I want to say that the delivery by each and every student was fantastic and, um, yeah, definitely rivals, uh, what we see here, uh, regularly. Um, I think, you know, I really liked, um, hearing that you got input from the community and then produced a very accurate SWAT analysis based on that input. So, you know, that's a really key thing when you're creating, um, a roadmap or a vision is to get the input of the people. Um, who, who are your customers, who are, who are going to be, you know, living that vision. Um, another thing I really loved was that you discussed the implementation stages because I think, um, and you laid out the vision for the five fifteen and thirty year implementation plan. Um, and I think a lot of times, um, many people think that, you know, this uh, or a, any proposal is really going to be some overnight transformation and it's not. Um, creating a vision is a process and it requires an investigation, that input from the community like you, um, collected and then the plan. Um, and you all have done a really excellent job of pulling that all together. Um, the other thing, you know, about the implementation plan is that you have to lay out a vision, um, talk about where you want to go, what is thirty years from now going to look like. Um, but I think for all of us here, you know, this is always a process of plan, do, check and adjust. And so we all have to keep that in mind is that, you know, we, we, um, can talk about what we want to have happen in the future. We make adjustments, see how it works out for the community, um, and make changes based on that. Um, there were some really great ideas that I heard that I don't think we talk a lot about. Um, and we, we talk a lot about a lot of things, you know, like, uh, bike, bike, biking, less cars, um, things like that. Um, we talk a lot about, um, you know, creating community spaces. Um, but what I heard here from you all is really, um, some really great examples that I think would, um, kind of create that community feeling that we all want to achieve. And I'll just give you a few examples. Um, that I saw in your excellent presentation. Um, you know, one of the things that stood out to me was the, the canopy covering or the shade. And, you know, I think that's something we take for granted, which is that, you know, we love our weather. Um, and the way to enjoy it and even better is, uh, is to have shaded areas, seating areas and so forth. So I thought that was great. And then, um, I thought a lot of things were great, but I'm just going to highlight the things that I thought were a little bit unique and we don't always talk about. Um, the other thing I really thought was cool was the, um, the art on the street. And, um, one I think really great, um, an area where that would really have a great impact is for the kids because the kids really like, in, in a sense, it's just entertainment for the kids and it's probably cheaper than a playground. It's something that they love to do. And so, you know, I would leave that up to the artist for what that implementation really is, but skipping and jumping from different colored circles and whatnot. So, you know, we do like to have, uh, beer gardens and breweries and things like that where the parents can have a drink so that, that, um, road art is the great way to entertain the children while we're all doing that. Um, and let's see. So those were, yeah, the outdoor seating, um. Oh, I really love the idea of the, of the park side frontage. Um, and then there was kind of a walking path from the downtown area, um, to the, to the greenery, to the park side frontage that was separate from the area. That was the separate from our existing Campbell Avenue, um, connection between downtown and the prune yard park area. So that's nice to have something, um, in that direction. So yep, overall, um, really well done. And, um, I think if we think about how we want things to look like a few decades from now, as the implementation process goes, I think, you know, what you've laid out is awesome. So thank you very much for all your effort.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray.
Yeah, yeah, really. Thank you, Cal Polly. This is, uh, this was really a, a great and fun, fun presentation. We really do appreciate that. You know, I can't believe you guys got so much done in such a short time and really learned so much about our, our wonderful town and, and, you know, we're only six square miles, but you saw all the, all the possibilities that are really pretty amazing. And we don't take the, you know, this big look back all that often. We're hitting pieces here and there, even with our housing element. So, uh, you know, I think you guys did a really great job of, uh, of giving us a lot of, of, of a good macro look and things to think about, uh, going forward. I guess, uh, just a couple of things I'm going to highlight that, uh, really caught my eye on the downtown presentation. And, and it came up a lot also in the Winchester one. And, and I think you guys really correctly identified, uh, maybe our, maybe our biggest issue. And that's how, uh, the small town character is our thing. You know, everybody's a small town character. And then you're talking about densifying while maintaining, while maintaining the character. And that's the trick. But you also came up with some, you know, really solid ideas, uh, you know, the outdoor seating, the outdoor art, uh, the setbacks. Uh, there was one element here was talking about setbacks, uh, of, of ten feet anytime you go above thirty five feet. I guess the one, one question or not a question, uh, it just may be a comment in a way, I, I know that we were, so you know, small town character, how do you maintain that small town feel? And I know height is not everything. Depends on how you do the architecture, right? But, but I know we were talking about, um, in one of the areas, you know, more, no more than five stories. Then I think, uh, in one area, what do we say? East, East Campbell Avenue up to seven stories, ninety feet. West Campbell Avenue up to four stories, sixty five feet. I don't want to quibble on the details, but yeah, you know, that, that's my question. That where do you, you know, where do you keep the small town feel and where do you lose it? And that's the fine line that I think we're, we're having to, uh, battle has our, a lot of cities in Campbell. In, in California, as we, as we battle our housing crisis and, you know, the fact that we're, we're densifying. We do have to densify. We do have to go vertical. But I think you came up with some nice ideas on the setbacks, et cetera. The other thing that, uh, that really caught my eye is, uh, is all the attention and focus on pedestrians and bicycles. And so much more that we can, that we can do and, and really some great ideas here. And I, I share some of the concern. We want to be careful about closing all streets completely to cars, but I thought that idea about, uh, Central Avenue between the, uh, downtown light rail and, and the civic center. Uh, kind of that pathway was really something that, that really could be really cool. And, and, you know, the pictures that they show when you came out, when you come out of the VTA. the pictures that they show when you came out, when you come out of the VTA station there is just so much nicer, right? If you could do that. The multimodal circulation I thought was, was really a nice, you know, it's a nice thought. It's a nice thing. It's a nice vision to have and to try to do. And other than that, I just, the one final thing though is, and of course, and of course, we know that in, in terms of planning, I don't know how you do it. We talk about a hotel here and an innovation center there, which of course, I think all, all that we can do in planning wise is sort of encourage that. It's kind of up to the, you know, to the private sector to kind of come up with those uses and to kind of agree that that really works there and that's going to work out. That's going to pan out. So a lot of great ideas. And I really thank you guys for all the work and, and as a presentation. And I'm going to, I'm going to go through it again because there is a lot. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Kamka.
Thank you, Chair. So just like my fellow commissioners, I thought I actually loved everything you showed to us. Things that resonated with me was the open space. The, I love the promenade, you know, I know those pictures aren't from here, but it just took me back to the Italy days when I was visiting Italy and the promenade and people are out there with their statues and the fountains and the historical structures. And so as they say, dream, dream big or go home, you know? And so to me, we have to dream big, you know, and we're in challenging time, challenging times ask for bold actions, you know? And so we shouldn't be afraid, you know? And, you know, I, I was very, very surprised by what I saw and I loved it. The greenery, you know, the things that I know resonates with me is the greenery. We need to keep as much of green space as we can. Of course, that means, you know, going high, but so be it. You know, I'm, I'm an engineer. I try to be logical, you know, so you can have it both ways. And so I'll definitely take height, you know, as long as I can have greenery. Places for people to congregate and all the different types of housing. That was the other thing that I enjoyed, you know, instead of uniformy, uniformity, cookie cutter type of a design to try to fit as many things. I think small time, small town character calls for innovation and ingenuity and, you know, different architectures, you know, so all those things resonated with me. As far as closing downtown to car traffic. Let's try, you know, and if it's, if it doesn't work, you know, we can go back, but you know, we have streets that are, you know, around it. You know, I'm not sure. Let's, let's try. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Adam Bookbinder here. Thank you for the scope of your vision and your diligence in trying to understand your city. If I come off as critical at any point, it's because I'm, I'm taking this really seriously and I care about these issues. This is really radical in scope. I appreciate that. I think it's less radical in terms of timeline. I appreciate the outsider's view, the idea of how we can truly make the most of assets like our park frontage, our bike trails, our transit stations, or how we can pedestrianize much of our downtown. I definitely appreciate the idea of connecting a protected bike lane, running the length of Campbell Avenue to LaScotta's Creek Trail and the VTA Station. I'm skeptical that we, that we can manage to pedestrianize Orchard City and Civic Center. I, I hope that we can. But I think the pedestrianizing central and at least part of Campbell is a slam dunk. I don't think anyone expects the whole downtown to be raised and rebuilt immediately. I think this is a, a blueprint for gradual change. Perhaps too gradual, given the timeline. The idea of central promenade looks beautiful to me. My favorite time to go downtown is the farmer's market and opening up more of the city to that kind of liveliness would be wonderful. I think this has really highlighted how much better the incredibly valuable space could be. Shade, outdoor seating, plazas, bike trails, homes with access to parks and downtown and transit. I'm a bit less leery of the concept of tall buildings than I think a lot of people in town. I may not be in the majority. Note, for example, that the beautiful streets of, one of the images that you had looked like Edinburgh, but it could have been anywhere in Europe, have straight up five story buildings on pretty narrow streets without any step backs. Our largest affordable housing complex is 12 stories tall and it's shaped like a rectangular prism. I think the important thing as we become a bigger city is not to be isolated from each other. Beautiful, accessible public spaces are a big part of that. And people being outdoors and not in cars is a big part of that. The question is less, you know, will we grow and more, how will we grow? And I think if we grow into a shape like the one you folks presented here, I think it would be a clear improvement. Thank you very much for the presentation. I really liked it.
Okay, thank you. I guess maybe as a, I think myself as planning progressive, trying to keep politics out of it. But I, I just love the pedestrians, top level. I love the pedestrian access, the green canopy. A bit like the vice chair, I think higher buildings are managed properly is not something you need to be too afraid of. Think about Europe and they have these plazas which bring together communities. They also have high buildings, some with less setbacks on there. So there is a way of doing it. I, I think high buildings also have a, a benefit there if done sensitively. You mentioned about diversity and inclusion. One thing I would say is that you can over gent, gentify, gentrify or beautify some of these over, some areas, which is a barrier to some groups that they feel pushed out. So I'd encourage thinking about inclusivity, about making sure that a particular demographic isn't felt excluded by making some areas too, too beautiful, right? And also about maybe accessibility for things such as food trucks, pop up shops, encouraging small businesses, easy access to the city. In Campbell, we, hopefully this year we will be, so it'd be great. We're having a Thursday night concert coming back, which is literally next door to where we are, is completely packed out. So it's a testament to success, but you know, thinking about going to have a lot more people in there, encouraging concerts and public events and community events and having an area which is amenable to that would be a great thing to think about, you know, an ice rink in, in winter, right? Some, some area which can act as a pivot would be, would be a great thing to think about. And I, I know that's considered in some of the plans which have been presented tonight. I, I know that some of it is thinking about, you know, a lot of rebuilding here. Maybe one thing to think about because of the energy that's involved in demolition and construction and creation of concrete and steel. Maybe it's repurposing buildings and building on top of it if possible, rather than just demolishing buildings and starting again, because that's not particularly environmentally sensitive from, from the energy usage point of view. So that's something else I'd throw into the mix. But overall, I, I think it's, you know, some really great presentations, great ideas, all the top level stuff. I'm, I'm personally very excited about. So those, I think are the comments, questions from the commission, maybe comments. As this is a proper planning commission meeting, I will open it up to the public here because I can see a couple of public members. So note, do we have anybody online? Okay, thank you. So I'll close that. So Director Eastwood, yeah, I think we've, hopefully comes quite very impressed and thankful for a, a great presentation, all the effort and that Cal Poly have been so interested in Campbell. I, I really looking forward to the final report.
Okay, great. So Cal Poly students, I, I hope you heard all that. We thank you for being available tonight. Again, congrats on, again, I just want to underline 10 weeks of work. Usually we hire consultants that give us a six to nine month schedule. So these students put together what you saw in 10 weeks. So I thought, I want to thank the grad students and we'll go ahead and pause on the first part of the presentation. We can now pivot to the second part, which is the undergrads are going to present some vision concepts around the Winchester Air Station. Just want to turn back to the chair if you want to take a break or just move right into the second part.
Yes, that's a great idea. If we can have a five minute bio break, comfort break. So back at 20 past.
Sure. I was looking forward to that. Yeah. It's fine. It's fine. Okay, Adam, you're going to have to come every Tuesday and have your wife.
Okay, I think we've all been, had our sugar rush with the vice chairs, very nice cookies or biscuits. So I think we're ready for the second part and the undergraduates, looking forward to it.
Okay, I'll keep my comments super short so we can transition right to the undergrad. So I'd like to introduce the two professors that head up the design studio, Amir and Biate. And they will introduce the undergrads. Again, the focus was the Winchester Light Rail Station and on to you, Amir and Biate.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. Good evening, Chair Cheng and the planning commissioners. It's a great pleasure to be here tonight and with the help of our undergraduate students, present a series of urban design visions for the Winchester Station District. I'm Amir Hydrasulihah, Associate Professor in City Planning and my co-instructor in the studio is Batevon Bishampink. We are very excited about getting the chance to work on this particular project because the site has great potentials to apply transit oriented development principles and respond to the housing needs of Campbell. Both are topics that are highly relevant across California. And our students tremendously enhance their planning knowledge and skills by focusing on these hot topics. I also want to thank Rob and his staff, Stefan, Steven Larista and Daniel for not only arranging the site visit, but also support our team by providing guidance and feedback on multiple occasion during the design process. A little info about the format of our presentation that will be different from the grad presentation. In our studio, eight teams proposed unique designs for the Winchester Station District. So all eight teams work on the same side. We decided that instead of getting into the details of each proposal, we concentrate more on the overarching goals and objectives of all proposals and only present the highlight, highlights of each design and point out to the similarities and differences in these eight proposals. You can find more info about each design in the final report that I believe is attached to your agenda. Unfortunately, it hit us hard this week and we couldn't get together to present as a group, but a smaller group of students are now at Cal Poly and they're going to present and they're going to represent all 35 students who work on this project. With that intro, I'll ask Emily, Matt and Kyle to present urban design visions for Winchester Station. Emily?
Hi, everyone. I'm Emily and I'm, yes, I'm sorry. I'm Emily and I'm here with Matt and Kyle's with us on Zoom. And we'll be presenting the urban design visions for Winchester Station on behalf of our studio teams. Our site is located at the final stop of VTA's Light Rail Winchester Boulevard. The station is 0.8 miles south of downtown Campbell and is connected to it by Winchester. The station is point eight miles south of downtown Campbell and is connected to it by Winchester Boulevard. The existing site is a strip mall with high potential for redevelopment as it's adjacent to the residential neighborhoods and within walking distance of local parks, a supermarket and the historical St. Lucie's Parish. The downtown site may be denser with better walk score and bike facilities, but the Winchester site has its advantages as well. It has a higher population within a half mile distance, more acres of vacant land and fewer parcels and owners on the site, making it easier to develop. Here's a sample of the survey we conducted on our visit to Campbell on April eighth. We received twenty-eight responses and from this, we are able to get a feel for what the residents of Campbell are wanting from this development. Of this sample, seventy-five percent responded that they preferred the suburban-style building type, but we know that the city's vision for this site was to develop a lot of housing. So we focused on designing medium-to-high-density developments while creating a balance to maintain the small-town feel. We conducted a SWOT analysis in the following categories: Regulations, Urban Form, Land Use, Circulation and Transportation, Natural Environment, and Demographics and Economic Development. Some of our findings included that the land uses in the surrounding areas were very versatile and already attracted a lot of people to the area, but that the pedestrian connectivity from the site to the surrounding area is currently very poor. As we moved on to the visioning process, these were the goals we came up with as a class: to maintain and promote Campbell's image and community-oriented heritage with unique urban design, to offer a range of housing opportunities focusing on providing affordable and workforce homes, to create a community that integrates Winchester Light Rail Station into a multimodal and pedestrian-friendly circulation system, and to foster sustainable and environmentally-friendly development. We split up into eight design teams and each one had a different focus within three categories, producing eight unique designs. The first category is density. Half of the teams are considered high-density with over one million square feet of development, while the other half of the teams are medium-density with less than eight hundred thousand square feet of development. Next was land use with half of the teams designing developments that are primarily housing, meaning more than eighty-five percent of their development is housing, and the other half is mixed-use, meaning their development is less than seventy percent housing. Finally, we had affordability with half of our teams providing sixty percent or more affordability and the other half provided less than thirty-five percent affordability. Each of these combinations generates a unique design. For example, if you look at Team One in the pie chart, you can see that they designed a medium-density, primarily housing and mostly affordable development.
So the residents and city council of Campbell expressed to us a very strong desire to maintain the current small-town character and image of the city of Campbell. So all eight teams designed their proposals with this in mind. For example, the densities were lowered around the existing residential uses on the west side of the site to be less intrusive there along Nito and Bud Avenue. Some teams included townhome uses in their proposals as well as a sort of less-dense housing option near existing residential uses. So going off of the same objective, you can see how Team Five shows a sort of mixed-use ground-floor retail with medium-density development, while Team Three shows a higher-density version of this, highlighting a community area still trying to preserve that local character. So here's a rendering from Team Two, which is basically standing at the VTA site, looking east towards Nito Drive. So where that strip mall would be, you can see now. A not-too-intrusive, somewhat medium-dense, mixed-use, walkable area with urban plaza space. So our second objective was to promote and preserve a sense of community by activating public spaces and enhancing new and existing streetscapes. Team Six, you can see they show public spaces more centrally on Winchester with semi-private spaces on the west side of the site. And you can see this here kind of on the left with these arrows. The arrow more on the right has that more public hardscape, kind of urban plaza area with this green, green inner courtyard area, sort of more semi-private, more towards the west there. Team Four has a more east-to-west movement of people with more pocket parks and community gardens. And there's sort of a more of a movement from people from public spaces to semi-private spaces. You can see how Team Seven activates public spaces more centrally on Winchester, near the station there, while Team Eight shows a very, very strong east-to-west connection from the station to the surrounding neighborhood over there with a very strong east-to-west pedestrian passeo. Team Five, I think, does a great job of showing where and how their public space is activated. And you can really see how people will move throughout the site and sort of activate these little plazas and public spaces. Green space and hardscape are very articulated here. So the goal is just to really activate that ground-floor mixed-use development that spans across all eight teams. So I'm just gonna go over a quick overview of overall housing and land uses. All eight projects, as we know now, are mixed-use developments with varying land use types and building typologies. Half of the groups are primarily housing development with a few anchor points of commercial development. Two teams included non-residential uses with mixed-use ground-floor commercial uses. Two teams included both residential and office space. Half of the teams include over sixty percent affordable units in their development, while the other half include less than thirty-five percent affordable units. Most teams include townhome and apartment typologies, while the remaining teams have solely apartments. But all projects include a variety of unit types and affordability, including studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments. Overall, our goal is just to promote housing affordability. And we tried to do it in a variety of different ways and kind of get a holistic understanding of uses and get things squared away. So here you can see that townhome typology, that Team Six did a great job of rendering. So this townhome kind of housing typology, we would like to see along Nito Drive there to the west where those lower-density housing developments are.
So in order to achieve the desired level of housing, all of our projects are proposing reduced parking standards. We came up with more conservative standards for the developments that are offering less affordability and a reduced standard for those that are offering more affordability. Both standards are lower than the city's current parking standard, considering that this is a transit-oriented development and that the transit station will reduce the need for parking spaces. This way, we can increase density without increasing building height, making our developments more pedestrian-friendly. For example, the city previously required two-point-five parking spaces per unit for two-bedroom apartments, but our sites propose a conservative standard of two spaces per unit and a reduced standard of one-point-two-five spaces per unit.
While all eight projects include various housing densities, some are more radical than others. While numbers vary between groups, I'll share the same goal of creating more dense and affordable housing. Similarly, all eight projects try to create a hierarchy of densities within the site with the highest densities near the station and the lowest densities furthest away from the station. So you can see here, Team Four does a great job of increasing that density closer to the station, lowering it towards the west side of that site. While Team Three kind of increases their density more at mid-block, where you can see here, their parking structures right here in the middle of the site are kind of higher density as to not be intrusive on Winchester or Nito Drive. So at mid-block, that's where you'll see their highest density. And this is just kind of an overall site plan that shows that lower density around those residential neighborhoods, staggering it up and building it up towards the center of the site there on the west side, with the highest density again being closest to the station.
Pedestrian and cyclist circulation needs to be improved. There also needs to be main destinations on our sites that give a reason for pedestrians and cyclists to traverse through. To do this, pedestrian circulation was split into two categories, such as the one exhibited through Team Two and Four. Team Four uses an east-to-west circulation from the VTA station towards the low-density residential neighborhood, while Team Two uses a centralized circulation along Winchester. For cyclist circulation, a consistency for all teams was used with primary routes centered on Winchester going both north and southbound. Here we have a perspective view from Team One showcasing how a centralized circulation along Winchester could potentially look like. Here, they use public spaces to entice pedestrians and to explain more of their site. With increased walkability and the use of non-motorized transportation, the flow of vehicular circulation needs to be slowed with physical infrastructure. This was done two ways, redesigning the bus routes and redesigning the streetscape. In this slide, you could see there are two different designs for the bus routes at the VTA station. Team One, Four and Six use a kiss-and-ride model, while the other teams, such as Team Seven, use a redesigned bus route that loops, that loops and ingresses and runs parallel to Winchester. Here, Team Three combines the kiss-and-ride model with ingress into the eastern parcel, creating a unique and efficient layout for their bus route. This next slide also displays vehicular circulation, but through the redesigning of their streetscapes. Teams Two, Three, Five and Eight chose to reduce their amount of lanes from four to two and remove medians in order to add a center-turn lane. The remaining teams, however, widened their sidewalks and implemented protected bike lanes to favor non-vehicular circulation. Here we have another example from Team Six, where they widen their sidewalks and use protected lanes on Winchester as well as medians to have vehicular circulation slow down. Our projects were encouraged to use green design principles within their developments. These principles can range from active to passive heating and solar panels to permeable surfaces for minimal impact runoff to low-flare surfaces. The overall goal for all teams was to reach net zero-carbon development. Here we have Team Eight accomplishing this by this objective by placing solar panels atop multiple buildings to reduce their dependence on non-renewable energy. Team Eight furtherers their design principles by implementing a community garden to potentially offset a heat island effect in the development. And lastly, in addition to the design principles, the use of greens practices was highly encouraged as well, specifically during the design and construction phases. In order to do this, the projects go through a rigorous SEQA mitigation process to determine where adjustments will be needed. And here we have Team Six as a finished rendering, on which we hopefully accomplish these practices. And then we wanted to individually highlight each team's development. So here we have Team One with medium density with a primarily housing and affordability with a total residential units of five-hundred-and-forty and total square footage of seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-four. Here we have Team Two with high-density, mixed-use and mostly affordable with a total residential units of nine-hundred-and-twenty-six and with a total square footage of nine-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten square feet. Here is Team Three with high-density, mixed-use and some affordability. Their total residential units are eight-hundred-and-seventy with total developable square footage at one-million-one-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty square feet. Here is Team Four with medium density, primarily housing and some affordability on their site. Their total residential units are six-hundred-and-seventeen with total square footage at six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-seven square feet. Here we have Team Five with high-density, mixed-use and mostly affordable. Total residential units at one-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine and total square footage of developable area at one-million-five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-six square feet. Next is Team Six with high-density, primary housing and some affordability with total residential units coming in at nine-hundred-and-thirteen and total square footage of developability at one-million-five-hundred-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet. Next, we have Team Seven with medium density, mixed-use and mostly affordable. They have a total residential units of five-hundred-and-four and then totaled development square footage at nine-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven square feet. And then last, we have Team Eight with medium density, mixed-use and some affordability. They have a total of five-hundred-and-seventy-two residential units and then nine-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-six total developable square feet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Really appreciate that. And some great ideas on what we could do around Winchester VTA. So I'll start from the other side and Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, thanks, Cal Poly, again. Really, just a lot of work done in such a short time. And I really don't know how you did it. You really got a good take on our great city here. Again, I was taken by the comments about the walkability and the bike ability being lacking and that we can do a lot more there. And I think you guys had some great ideas on, you know, better bike access for the VTA site and more pedestrian-friendly, you know, projects. I thought that was really good. I do like how you did focus on the VTA site itself. And I thought it was kind of interesting. You surveyed thirty-four people, mostly at the VTA site, and sixty percent of them rely on cars. So it kind of shows how we're, you know, trying to get people to take the alternative transit is a part of the battle here, but truly something that we have to do. You know, a couple, I thought overall, you know, the projects were good. I love the green space, you know, the plazas, you know, try to make it bicycle pedestrian-friendly, small-town feel. I think you've got all that there. Just a couple of things that might sound like criticism. We're just talking about this stuff here. I'm thinking about this stuff really fast. I think you noted that there was poor, no access really to the Los Gatos Creek Trail from here. And I know that your study area didn't go over to the trail, but I would have liked to have seen a connection between the VTA, the Winchester Station and the trail. The densities, I think, you know, yeah, I don't think they were too radical. I know, I think the VTA itself has said that they, and I think the VTA is doing the project right at their station. They've talked about seventy-five units an acre as really being their minimum. That's what they want. So seventy-five is not out of line, I don't think. Also, I did think that your parking was not radical at all. It was maybe a little bit more than we've talked about with some of our recent projects, a little higher, which is, you know, good or bad, is just a point that kind of caught my eye a little bit. I do think that overall, there was another comment about rerouting the buses. And I know that VTA reroutes their buses every other year. It seems like it's been a major, major challenge for them. So I don't know how practical that is. I think you had some pretty good ideas there, but you like to think that maybe they've tried that or thought about that. Just one quick question, just a real small point, but just kind of the detail that you guys got into. So I was reading the report and you came up with a, there's a paragraph pretty early in it that talks about average residential development costs of sixty-five, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars per square foot within one-half mile of Light Rail Station and four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars overall. So I'm reading that and I'm going, well, where did they come up with this? And lo and behold, in the next paragraph or two paragraphs afterwards, it was explained. And they had a regular system and it seemed like a pretty, pretty good and accurate estimate. And it's pretty high. It's a lot of money, but that's what people are paying. So I like that attention to detail. So again, I think, you know, a lot of great ideas and a lot of food for thought for us. And I really thank you guys for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kim, go.
Thank you, Chair. I thought you guys did a lot of work in such a short period of time. You know, I'm glad I'm not in school because this would have given me hives, you know, if I had to do this kind of work. But congratulations, you guys have done great. The thing that I liked most about it is, because we had limited time reading this stuff, is the summary tables that you provided. You know, so if I was interested in how do these things, how do these teams compare to each other, I could go to the table and look up the FARs and look up the open space, look up the land coverage. And look up the FARs and look up the open space, look up the land coverage that to me. You know, was great because then I could see which one of the teams. Was doing something and then go to that, you know, page and study it a little bit more. So I thought that was great. The graphics was fantastic, you know, nowadays. When you show things graphically versus describe them or try to tell by text, you know, you get much more, as they say, picture worth a thousand words and. And I think you guys looked at, you know, many different scenarios, which is great. That's how that's how sometimes you come up with the winning combination is it could be. An idea from team one, an idea from team three and the idea from team whatever. And the when you put that together, that becomes the winning combination, you know, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just reiterate that I I did go through all the team stuff and it was it it was great to see how much. Effort you put into this and detail. You know, of course, this is a really. Major hypothetical, right? The the assumption of. Repurposing the Campbell Plaza as well as the VTA. Area and and the nursery, that whole area, it makes for an interesting study. So. You know, there's there are a lot of things I liked about aspects of it. I certainly like things like the plaza park playgrounds, the open spaces. I would have liked to have seen. On these on these charts that you have all the teams listed, including all the different information is to have a. A percentage or square footage on open space included so that you could see the relative. Ratio of of that to the total square footage and the other square footage. So that would have been nice to see. The the idea of more walkability, the idea of what I call boulevarding Winchester, making it. You know, more of a attractive that and that's part of Winchester. It's it's we have we have a better part of Winchester that looks more boulevardy. North of there, but not so much south of Campbell. So. Upgrading Winchester for walkability and attractiveness is obviously something as well as pedestrian, you know. You know, getting the pedestrian stuff right in terms of being able to go across the street. So, you know, so the the playgrounds, the parks, the spas, the rooftops, all that is is appealing to me. You know, the thing that strikes me, again, I'm going to be, I'm going to. Accept my criticism with a grain of salt, but I look at. The overall thing and I see eighteen to twenty-four, twenty-five buildings in that. There's a lot of buildings. And it's a big mass of 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 area for a mixed use in a fairly small space. And it's it just strikes me. I know that there's none of them that are more than, I guess. Five or six stories, but I do like the fact that some of the teams put the lower two-story units on on the north and west side. Which which is where the neighborhoods are. So I think that's a real desirable thing. I would have liked to have seen more space. I know that developers don't want to put in more space, but and I guess urban planners take the cue from that probably. But but I I think, you know, there was one, at least one that had like the park. Across the street on Winchester, across the street from the VTA that was right up front on Winchester, a big open park. I like that idea. It reminds me of the thing that comes to mind is. I, you know, I I don't know if everybody knows Yerba Blaina Park in downtown San Francisco. I mean, I can't think of a. Somewhere, anywhere, certainly in California, where a downtown urban park is such a beautiful addition, you know, that is used. As the Yerba Blaina Park in in the Yerba Blaina Center area of San Francisco. So having something like that in the midst. In that case, in the midst of a whole bunch of commercial buildings is striking and useful. And so those are the kinds of things I would like to see to reduce the mass of of apartment or condo buildings one after another. So so that's the thing, you know, on the list of it goes from five hundred units on the low end to over eleven hundred units on the high end. My personal preference would be to err towards the low end of the number of units in the five to six hundred range and get more open space. And then, of course, figure out a way to make it a good portion of them affordable. So those are my takes on it. It's a great effort and I applaud you on it and thank you very much.
Thank you. Strasky.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, everybody. This is Maggie again. Thanks again to the undergrads for all your really fantastic work here. I think it's a really great experience for you all to hear about the the thoughts and inputs from from all of us here and our. Various views, our diverse views, which is why we have a commission of seven people. I just wanted to, because you know, that's how it's going to be going forward, no matter what you're part of. Yeah, it just had one, I echo everything that I, you know, my fellow commissioners here said. One thing I wanted to add that I really liked, and I think it is related a little bit to the open space, but not exactly kind of the. Maybe the thought of definition of open space. I think there's open space and then there's, you know, how usable is that open space? And so when I look at team six's layout here, they've got kind of that European style. Layout with kind of a inner courtyard. And so in terms of open space and families, and this is very true in European towns and settings. Because they do a lot of that there, but that's a nice place for parents to send their kids down and play with other kids. They know that. They're going to be reasonably safe and, you know, the rest of the parents in that in that. Building are going to be keeping an eye on things and there's not really a risk of them running out into the street. So, you know, that's. That's a big advantage as opposed to having an open space area next to a busy street where. You know, the likelihood or probability of it being used is a little bit lower because of the safety elements that may come into play. So. I'm always focused on the family element and kid's safety, as everybody knows here, because that's. The stage of my life that I'm in. So so yeah, applaud everybody and congratulations and. Really appreciate everybody's input.
Thank you, Fosha.
Well, thank you. I'm the Vice Chair. As I said to the grad students, thank you for the scope and boldness of your visions. Thank you for your diligence and learning about our city. And again, to the extent that I'm critical, it's because these are serious proposals and I really care about these things. I really appreciate the street mix diagrams and the bluntness on the uselessness of sharrows on packet page fifty-seven. I note that packet page sixty-two mentions that PD zoning is flexible, although as I understand it, we're trying to use less of it. But there's no mention of density bonus provisions allowing an extra three floors of building on all BMR projects. As I'm fond of noting, our largest affordable project Wesley Manor is twelve stories tall, currently illegal and very much part of our city's character. I deeply appreciate that all of these planes take space away from cars and protect bike lanes on Winchester, having biked up and down it. I. I would very much like that. It's interesting to consider the space used per parking stall. I believe that you estimated three hundred and seventy square feet with aisles and all compared to the space per person for, say, an apartment. I think that if we lean into car share and unbundled parking, that is where you rent an apartment and you pay extra to rent a parking space if you want to. We can get away with considerably less parking. I strongly approve of the pedestrian peracity concepts, which would allow people to walk and maybe bike through places where cars can't go. I agree with Commissioner Crave that I'd like to see a connection to the creek trail. I like the volume in option five, but I prefer keeping Winchester free of on-street parking. I concur with Commissioner Strasky on option six, that protected courtyards are excellent. I'm very skeptical of in option seven, the addition of Warbler Court, which is a new two-lane road with no bike lanes plus four lanes on Winchester. That's a lot of volume of cars. I'm concerned about the design speed on Winchester. We have a center island already just north of Campbell and it doesn't seem to slow traffic. The road is straight and wide. And if you want it to be nice to walk along, you're going to have to add speed bumps, bulbous, remove lanes, narrow the road, that sort of thing. I approve of the basic idea that we can make much, much better use of the area around downtown Campbell Station and here the area around Winchester Station. I did have. Two questions. I was unsure what's meant by the county not being in compliance with PM two-point-five emissions. That's on page sixty-three of the packet. And I broadly wanted to ask if Winchester traffic actually goes at thirty-five miles an hour. Those questions to. I believe the first one is to the presenters and the second one, I guess, to staff. So so first, the presenters, what what did you mean by the county is not in compliance with PM two-point-five emissions?
Um, there's a standard under like SEQA documents usually that you have to be under a certain level of. Like emissions for certain things and the entire county like already doesn't fall under that for the state of California. So. It's like something that you have to mitigate when you're doing construction.
Uh, thank you. That makes sense. And for staff, I don't know if you have context on this.
Just to, I'm sorry, on the first, that's a regional air quality standard, PM two-point-five and the students correct. Thank you very much. But. As the areas are in compliance, there are standard construction measures that address that. Just wanted to add a bit more of that. On the second one, I was going to ask. Mr. Stephen Rose, who is not a traffic engineer, but is furiously looking up some references if he can answer the question.
Yeah, I just broadly offer that speed limits do vary in Winchester. So the few street signs I pulled up were thirty miles per hour. So I would venture a guess that they probably do change throughout the roadway network from from south to north.
Oh, I don't mean what are the speed limits. I meant what's the speed of traffic?
What is the speed of traffic?
Yeah.
That'd be a question for a traffic engineer. They do pull out sticks to measure that from time to time.
That's fair.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. So I had a question. Similar comments to my fellow commissioners here, some great material here, especially in the time that you had to prepare this. You know, the thrust here is on high density development, which, you know, we obviously need. I'm curious. As you can probably tell a bit from my accent, I come from the UK. We did some really good high-density developments and we made some really bad mistakes. Which then had to get demolished and they're still going through that learning process at the moment. What references have you made to other countries, other areas where they have gone through this high-density development? And I don't know in particular, if you have, are there any particular lessons that stand out for you? Was that a tough one?
We have a couple of other students here who might be wanting to say something. Give me a second.
Not to worry. It was it was just thinking back where where we've had these type of high-density developments and. I remember from an ABA conference in Santa Barbara. They didn't seem to be referring to the to overseas experiences, which I thought was a missed opportunity. So I was just curious, not not to worry. But, you know, maybe just reiterating it, the the open space being really important. You know, I'm actually, again, putting my earlier comments, I think actually. Higher buildings and more stories actually enables more open space. Because if you have higher developments, you know, it the economics just works for the developer better. So you're putting effectively people vertically, which means that you can pull back horizontally and allow more open space. So. You know, maybe being think thinking about that would be great and that's probably beyond the remit and purview of maybe what you've been given. Given where. Campbell likes to think of itself as a more of a. Community town and maybe less high-density development. But. With that, that's my comments. Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Kimko.
Thank you. I had a question for one of the professors, if that's okay. Professor Amir Hajra Soodia. Who picks the the city or the place where the next, I guess. Project will be designed by the students? Do the students pick the municipality or do the professors suggest?
We have a process at our department and it starts by a year before. The actual studio, we send an email to all of our alumnis and connections in practice. And ask for projects to support our studios. And we go off that list and contact whoever from our network, which mostly comes from our alumnis who are. Either city manager or the community directors, development directors, and they propose. Working on a specific site in their municipality, we'll look at those sites and pick the one that. Benefit students most and strategically they can learn more from that project. We were lucky that. Rob Eastwood, one of Cal Poly alumnis, contacted Professor Dan Decker. And Professor Dan Decker generously allowed us to join the team and. We worked with Rob and his staff to define the second project. And we picked the site because, as I mentioned, it's the. It was best, one of the best cases for our students to try. Thinking about the TOD principles and addressing housing needs in California. So it was rich with. Learning materials for our students.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. I will just go through the formality maybe of opening up to the public. Do we see any wanted? Okay, so I'll close that.
Stephen Saunders, would you like to speak?
Okay, thank you. I thought the students did a really good job. I was impressed with their kind of factorial design of how they broke the groups up and the things they looked at. I was a little concerned about a number of the proposals in terms of their bus circulation. At the site, it just didn't look like buses were going to go where they thought. One of them had them going down and making a left turn and do a parking structure or something. So that needed a little more work, but the other elements of it were pretty interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Close at that point and just really reiterate to the whole Cal Poly professors and and all the students and really appreciate it. I think everybody's in agreement here. Superb effort and and a great job. You know, kind of inspiring for our future that we've got future generation of planners and designers coming up with these these great ideas and imaginative. Takes on what our cities can be. Also, I'd like to thank Rob and his team and the initiative of reaching out to Cal Poly. And this has been been a great event. So thank you very much. With that, I don't think we've got a community director's report.
Nothing further than that. I just want to thank the commission for coming out the day after the holiday to be here to receive the presentation. Thank all the students for their great work. And once we get the final reports, we'll make sure we distribute them to the commission, also the city council and some point circle back. some point circle back on all these great ideas and see where we take them. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Please. Council, council member, Gibbons.
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to extend the appreciation of myself as a council member, and I'm sure in behalf of all the council to thank you. This has been a marvelous opportunity. Delighted to have you help and give us perspective and get shake out a few cobwebs. So thank you all for a superb presentation this evening and we look forward to your final reports coming weeks. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Felicia.
Just a question for staff. What, what's the, you seem like awesome ideas. So like, what's the follow-through? What's the odds that these get implemented as area plans or in some kind of future plan?
More to come. I think, you know, the first step was to get the ideas out on the table, get the finished products. But I think at some logical point in the next six months, we'd circle back and, and see definitely if it is it worth pursuing these as specific plans or transit area plans for both the downtown and the Winchester areas. Thank you.
I have the same question. Thanks.
Well, with that, if there's any, any further comments?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I missed. Please.
I, this is Professor Dan Decker again, and I just want to say on behalf of my colleagues and I, this kind of exposure for our students is really invaluable. As planning commissioners, you're very busy. I too have served for the last eight years in San Luis Obispo's Planning Commission. And I know what an imposition or what a demand it is to have an extra session when you listen to students' work. There's always a sense of priorities and is, is it going to be worth it to listen to student work? We appreciate Rob's confidence in our students and we appreciate you're giving us the time. This brings a, a real special enthusiasm on the part of the students and it builds confidence tremendously. So on behalf of all three of us, I'd just like to thank you and go Cal Poly. Rob is one of our alums, one of our distinguished alums. So is Stephen. So we're well represented in your city. And we are very proud of our alums and, and the kind of opportunities they've brought us.
Thank, thank you. It was, it was a, a real pleasure. This was not a trial at all. Some of our planning commission meetings was fun as this. So really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting till the next regular Campbell Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.